Okay. Good evening, everyone. Well, happy Groundhog's Day and also welcome to 2-2-2-2. So February 2nd, 2022, kind of an unusual date. It is 6:00 PM and this is a Cedar Woolley City Council Study Session. My name is Julia Johnson. I am mayor and I will open up this council meeting. So. Yes?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Burns.
Councilman Burns, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda and remove Resolution 1088-22.
Okay. Is there a second behind that?
Councilman McGoffin, all second.
All right. So in making the motion, we would be tabling this resolution.
Madam Mayor, may I ask the reasoning behind that?
Mr. Burns, would you like to answer?
It's just, it's a study session for discussion. So I just question, just for, just so that I'm aware of where you're coming from.
The decisive nature of the resolution would be my main purpose. I would rather we work on local issues we can make a deep effect on and not something that's going to divide the city, but maybe things that can bring them together instead. Because there's a lot of strong feeling for most people, one way or the other. I don't know how good comes from it, no matter what we do or say. So that's why I hoped to pass this amendment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I've actually received a lot of emails today showing a lot of support for it. So I don't feel it's quite as divisive as some are making it out to be.
Well, there's mail, there's been emails, both pro and con, no doubt that have been sent. I've been forwarding them out to the council. Yeah. So we actually have a motion on the table. Is there any discussion regarding this motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Allen.
Okay. I personally, at this point in time, I don't think it's, it's changing anything. I would like to table it until a further date. Unless, you know, now I'm going to ask you a question. When you have people interviewing for jobs, are you asking them about their status of?
No, 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 we are not. And we don't require at all for people to be vaccinated. That's nowhere in our application process at all. Yeah, city doesn't mandate vaccinations.
Okay. Well, I, I think it's a very well-thought-out idea, but I think maybe we're jumping the gun a little bit. I would rather concentrate on filling departments with employees to keep our streets clean and do our part and that kind of thing. So. You know, I think this is very important. I don't want it to just go away, but I would like to table it until a further meeting. That's my own personal spin.
Okay. So, yes, Councilman Owen?
I agree. I agree with Glenn and I think personally, I think this is way too political for the City Council of Cedar Woolley. I think it's way out of line with their responsibilities and I'm, I had emails too and the ones I had were, were for it. I mean, they were against it. And you've probably seen them on your computer. They were from the churches and, and such, and a couple that were from individuals in my, my ward. It scares me because I think it's opening a can of worms. This can come back and bite Cedar Woolley if this thing is passed. The governor can do some mean things to Cedar Woolley, like cutting funding to grants and stuff like that. So we're not, we're not, we're not equipped to get into the big leagues in, in, in the politics. So I'd rather keep our focus on the city and operations of the city. And, and to me, it, it takes up time that I don't think we need to face right now. So I, I agree with the two councilmen. I think it should be tabled and, and this thing should really be thought out. And we do things without thinking and, and we can get in, in big trouble. So it hasn't been down to that yet. And I think we should just let it, let it ride for a while. And that's my thoughts, you know?
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
So any other? Cat, I, okay, I'm not sure which was first, both Councilman Lavaca, I'll go with you first, and then Councilman McGoffin, I'll go with you second.
So I just wanted to say that I have received support in the agenda in the past while I was campaigning. It was an important issue for people to fill that. Somebody was speaking up for him. So the idea kind of came when we spoke out about the FCCs and then the fish wasn't really affecting our community. But it was like, hey, this is a good way to do this. So that was the intent behind that. And it seemed like it was a pretty, pretty well idea to show support for those people that were unheard or possibly filling that frustration of their jobs. I want to make known, as we discussed, that I don't think that making this vote on the agenda going forward or being tabled for a time is a vote for or against the idea behind standing up for people with, with the challenge of facing mandated or have already gotten mandated requirements for their jobs or their livelihood. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to support what Councilman Allen and Councilman Owen and Burns have already discussed. I think this is well-intentioned and I hear what everyone's been saying. And I've seen all the emails. I read them all. This is something that's very strongly supported and opposed in our community. And I think just looking at it from an objective point of view, what do we gain by passing and discussing it and either shooting it down or passing it? Either way, we're going to make a lot of people upset and I don't think it's going to gain anything for the city. I think it's going to just kick the hornet's nest. People are already upset about this issue. And I don't think it's our position to make this decision. The Supreme Court and the court system are doing their job to, you know, counteract whatever legislation is being passed or executive order. So I think that that check in our government's already functioning. I don't think we as a city should be doing something like this. I agree, we should be focusing on the local issues that have a big impact. And that's my two cents.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, do we have, I know our firefighters have the mandate. I know that there's healthcare that have the mandate. Are we aware of other people here that are, are suffering, losing their jobs because of them, because of the mandate? I know, I know that none of this on the table is going to change what those businesses or what they have done. All of that has been done based on the mandates passed down through their organizations, whether they're union issues or government policy or health, you know, down the line, that stuff has taken place. Are we aware of any businesses locally here that are implementing or doing those sorts of things? I'm, I'm just not aware of any.
You know, not to my knowledge. That's an excellent question. And not to my knowledge, I have not heard anything like that, nor have I received any emails or calls from individuals who have been impacted that way. I have received calls from business owners because they're concerned that they can't hire people. There just isn't the service help out there. I've heard that. But, you know, so certainly I think given that, you're going to find that the businesses are not going to want to mandate vaccines. Because I think it'll just make it even that much more challenging. But, you know, excellent question, Councilwoman Diamond, but I have not, to my knowledge, and nor have I heard anybody within the city talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah. If there's no other questions or discussion, we do have a motion on the table. How I wrote it down is to amend the agenda by removing the item from the agenda. Did you want that amended to be, because I heard Councilman Allen and I believe Councilman Owen state tabling it. I don't know if removing it from the agenda is the same as tabling it, you know, what the technicality is as far as words. Charlie, can you give us some advice on that?
I'll do, do my best. Removing it from the agenda clearly takes it out of tonight's discussion. I think tabling it would, would also do that.
Okay.
At some point, it would be helpful to have some guidance from the council on if you remove it from the agenda, do you have a future date or timeframe in mind? Or if you table it, do you have a future date or timeframe in mind? So we have some sense for what the council's desire is on when to speak about this.
Sure. Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Lavaca?
So would there be opportunity for me to, if it's tabled or if it's a spend or removed from the agenda, that's most likely what it will be an opportunity for me to kind of describe how I was with that or, or what the intent was or some of the frustrations that have been expressed to me during my campaign? So that a voice is heard in that people feel like they do have, you know, us able to stand up for them, or at least me.
Yeah. So I'm glad you asked that question because to put it out there and to be transparent, Councilman Lavaca and I have had some really, some great conversation actually regarding this resolution. And that was one thing that I did put out to him. I know that I have made that an opportunity for a couple of the other council members who have read statements from the dais. There are statements that come from them. They don't necessarily represent the council members at all. It's just a statement about what they believe and, and why they believe it. And I offered that to Councilman Lavaca. In fact, I said, I had asked him, rather than putting the resolution forward, because I, personally, I feel the same way as, as has been stated, that I think it's, it's volatile and it's not, it's not the city's business to be doing this. It's a state and federal issue and those steps and processes are happening, happening as we speak. But, so I did offer him the opportunity to make a statement and I don't know if you want to do that tonight, Councilman Lavaca, if you want to do it at, at another council meeting. But certainly that is something that you can do and I, I will open that up for you to do that if you want. And clearly, and to be clear, it would be his statement and it would not represent the council at all.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like the council isn't ready to make a decision at all as far as timeframe that you may want to bring this forward. So for the time being, the motion is to amend the agenda and to remove the item from the agenda tonight. So I will take a vote at this time and I well, let me just say this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, okay, so let me just call, let me do this. Those in favor, and I'll call your name. If you're in favor of it, aye. If you're not in favor of tabling it, then that would be a no. So, yes or no? Yes, yes, let's table it. No, we're not going to table it. We're going to move forward with it tonight. So.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
In tabling, I mean, in tabling it, we are, we are leaving it on the, with the possibility of it coming up in the future. Is that correct?
Yes, if the council, if the council so choose to bringing it forward, they could.
Okay. And then also without a specific timeframe, I mean, this could come up should somebody on, you know, that, that either was, I mean, this, this is just, it's not on the table for agenda. We're not going to discuss it further. My understanding with this being as part of the study session is that this was just open for discussion, that we may not actually be doing any voting, but just open for discussion. Is that, is that correct or am I misunderstood there?
With the council meetings, we can actually take votes. We can take votes in the study sessions.
Okay.
I, I think I understand what you're saying, Sarah, because I'm kind of thinking the exact same thing. Wasn't that on the agenda to speak about tonight? So that we could put it to bed and focus on other business or vote on it and go forward. I thought that's what tonight was about.
Just, yeah, just discussion. I didn't, I didn't know that we were actually voting on it or. But I guess we're having that conversation now with it just being whether or not the agenda is accepted. So.
Yes, exactly. And you had two council members who actually brought it forward. Councilman Burns, who asked that it be removed from the agenda, set aside, and then Councilman McGoffin, who seconded that. So.
Madam Mayor? May I make a suggestion?
Yes. Okay. Councilman McGoffin, yes?
I think it would be wise to table this until we are through COVID. I think everyone's emotions are incredibly high. Everyone is divided right now. Passing this resolution in the middle of this fight is not going to accomplish anything but make us further divided as a community. I think we should wait until we have level heads again and we can address this after we have more scientific data, after we have people that are not so angry at each other and our hospitals are not full. I think that would be the wise thing to do.
Okay.
I agree. Madam Mayor?
I agree also.
All right. So we do have a motion on the table. I'm going to move forward again with the vote. I'm going to move forward again with the vote. And it is to amend the agenda and remove the item at this time, stating that we are actually going to table this, this resolution. Did you want to amend it? Is that what you were doing, Councilman McGoffin, to state that we don't bring it forward until after COVID is over? Were you amending the agenda? Okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second. Okay. All right. So, so we have a motion on the table to amend the agenda and to remove the item. And with the amendment that we would not bring it forward until after COVID is over for the reasons stated. So again, when I call your name, if you could just say, yes, you agree with this or no, you don't, that would be great. So Councilwoman Kestie?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Diamond?
No.
Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
Councilman Owen?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilman Allen?
This is until COVID is over?
Yes.
With that stipulation, no.
Councilman Lavaca?
No.
Okay. So it's up to you, people. Back to you.
If I may have the floor for just a second, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
So the idea and the intent to discuss this resolution and present it to the county commissioners, isn't it an intent to slander anybody or discredit any of the medical care that's available through our system? I, I think that it's available for people and it's been working and we can scientifically see that with the evidence in the CDC. The complication is that the choice is being removed from the individual and that's what's been expressed to me over and over. I.
Yeah, man, just a real quick question. Why to the, why do you want to take it to the commissioners, to the county?
Well, all, all it is, and maybe that's what we decide we don't do. And we just have it on the record here that we want to, is to say that a small ax can cut down a big tree and being able to allow people to have that voice, or maybe the county commissioner thinks all of the people in the community or all the city councils feel that this is right and this is what we should be doing. And they might not know, whoa, there are city councils out there that don't feel that that's right, don't feel that they should take the choice away from the citizens. So it's a matter of somebody, which is unfortunate because the first person forward is the guy that's going to get all the arrows or the slashes in any time. But somebody takes a step forward and shows like, maybe it's not okay to take the choice away from others. And that's kind of the intent on that. I think as an advanced society, we should be trusted to make those decisions, to do the research, to take people's health, other people's health into concern as well as ours into consideration to say, is this, is this something that is going to be beneficial? There is obvious risk with any vaccine and that's not to say the vaccine is unsafe or unhealthy. It's just to say that people should make that choice. It has affected our community and even though the Supreme Court shot it down, we're not under the OSHA laws. We're under labor and industries. So we're under, you know, the WAC 296. And so as state of Washington, our governor can go ahead and make a ruling that would mandate that if he so chose. He already did, has put forth in the resolution with his proclamation. And at the end of this year, we're going to go, or at the end of this month, we'll be going into three years of that emergency power. And I just, I don't see where it's going to be checked. And the, the voices that have come at me with the concerns from people that expressed in this, in this community during the campaign and even as of late, have been that, hey, our voices aren't being heard. We don't, we don't have a saying and everybody seems to think everybody, this is what they want. But it's not and nobody's speaking up. And that's.
Well, I, I have a question. I have a question for you. Why did you feel you needed to take this to the council when actually where the real power lies is with the, the state? Why not take it to the legislatures? That's where you should, that's where you should take it.
So there is the case where, and forgive me for even putting this onto the council in the first place, I am a freshman council member. And so in the original meeting that I had on January 5th, I presented, hey, here's an idea that we have. And it's something that is weighing in on the community and it has weighed in on a large part of the community. And even very people that have already received the vaccine just don't like the idea that we would be taking away people's choices that they have for them and their families. So it, it was a matter of putting that forward and then as soon as it went forward, there wasn't much discussion on, on how that went. I put it in that night and, and it appeared to go through pretty good. It seemed like it was pretty well to the point and it wasn't stating any kind of thing that resisted vaccines or anything like that. It just says, hey, let people of our community make their choice or that's what we feel. We know that we can't change the proclamation and that we support the county commissioners in the difficult position they put and our state legislative powers in the difficult position they're in. But none of this has ran through the legislation. It's ran through the emergency power. So that's where, that's where there's a little bit of, of a tug in war. Freshman newness as well as trying to make sure that I do represent the parties that got me in the, the people who put me here. So. If that makes sense.
Other comments? Discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Allen.
Yes.
I, I would have voted the other way until I heard, until COVID is over. Why don't we table this ordinance for like a four-month span and then possibly revisit that, you know? I mean, who knows if there's going to be another variant out there?
Okay. So is that a motion that you want to make?
Well, make a motion that we table this ordinance for four months and then have a choice to come back and review it.
Okay.
But make, if you, you move forward with the tabling of that, and it's not something my idea, but if there was a mandate that was put forth, that would be, seems like the more adequate time to re-bring it up if you were to table it or vote on tabling it. We don't know what more mandates are going to come down. I mean, it was two weeks to stop the spread and then it went into mask mandates. It went into and at home, it went into mandated just for healthcare workers to federal workers to being fully vaccinated to school teachers. I mean, it's, it just keeps increasing and that's why if we wait until it's over and we're in the third year of it, I just, it seems like it might be wiser to say if more mandates are coming, maybe it's better to bring it up. It's not something that I would, would hope to support though. Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Owen?
I'd say good enough.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to table the ordinance tonight and put it out for four months. And we can re-address it at that time. If the council wants to re-address the ordinance, at that time, we can bring it forward. Does that sound correct, Councilman Allen? Is that what you, how you wanted it?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So any other discussion or comments? Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I guess how I look at this, as we're discussing it, if you really feel like you're, no, even four months, I'm not going to change my mind. This is how I feel. Why, why waste, you guys are saying, you know, oh, let's focus on, you know, the things at the present. So why, why table it for later, if it's later, if it's something that you, you're not really going to want to do, you just say your piece now and, and then, you know, he won't have to worry about, will I be working on another thing? Will I be putting more effort into this and he can focus on something else? That's my thought.
If it is voted down, Madam Mayor, if I may say so, if it's voted down, I respect the wisdom of the council, obviously, one of seven, right? And so it's not something that I would drag on or to, to run into the ground or, or chasing the weeds. It's, I think it's something where the concern was that we're losing our ability to have an ask. In a civilized society, we just see a decline if we can't have an ask. And that's where people are saying, I can't even ask, you know, if this is right for me or not, because it's mandated. I'm put in a position for my job or not. So if it is voted down, I respect the council. And again, I want to say that I didn't want to bring the, the council into a position of disagreement or in, in drama. And I know that that obviously ended up being the case, but it is a hot topic issue. It is serious and it's, it's at our doorstep. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say that I, this is a very hot topic, obviously. There are, there are people on all sides of the board that are, you know, the, the sad part in all of this is that it shouldn't be political, but it has become political. But we need to take our, the, take party lines out of it and look at the big picture and what's, what we want to do or what we think, you know, is best based on our discussions with our constituents. The discussions with the medical professionals we might talk to or wherever we get our information and gather all of that information so that we can make the right decisions. And that's why, why we're all here is, is to, to kind of gather that information and to, and to go in the directions that we think is best with the information that we're provided. I think this has become so volatile is because the information provided changes daily and that's coming at all levels. Whether if you're looking at the science of it, whether you're looking at the policies, I mean, every single level, every state, every county is dealing with this completely differently. And, and that's where there has been, become a lot of divide. I personally have looked at this from different sides. I've talked to people that are vaccinated, that don't believe in the mandates and support people, the opposition of this. I have talked to people that are vaccinated that wish everybody was mandated to do so, you know? I have talked to people that are, have claimed they will never be vaccinated and there's nothing you can do to stop them from, you know, or force them to do that. I've talked to people from all sides and all parties. I know private businesses that maybe don't believe in the mandates. But they have gone out and they have talked to, to medical professionals and they have had people come and do vaccinations at their offices for anybody that's willing or wants to and giving them their free choice to do so. So they're providing a safe work environment. They're providing them with all the tools and options out there in order to let them make the decisions for themselves and even providing the opportunity to do it on the job while they're getting paid. So I, you know, I think that we do have community that does work hard to keep people safe and does do the best that they can and does try to provide people with their the opportunity to make their own informed decisions. And so those, those people are out there in our community. And I don't think that we should, we should disregard any of it. I think if anything, we should, if, obviously there, we're cited on all different sides here. Maybe we, we, we table it and, and think about it and discuss it at the next study session next month, instead of holding it for four months. We can, you know, it's a hot topic. It's on our, you know, it's on our minds. It's not going away. COVID, unfortunately, I, I, I didn't agree with the language in that last one. I didn't agree with the language in that last one because COVID unfortunately, depending on who you talk to, could be here for years. And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with that, but all I all I know is right now I don't feel that we're going to accomplish a whole lot tonight. Based on where everybody's coming from, but I do think that we could, we could all kind of. Gather some additional information or or maybe bring it up and discuss it again on a month to month basis and we can always pull it from the agenda if it's not, if it's not something we wish to move forward with at that time.
Okay, thank you. Well, we do have a motion on the table now. It's been made and second to address it in four months. So. So you'll have an opportunity to vote on that here in a minute. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, hearing done, I'll go through the vote again, same procedure. If you are for this, it is. A motion to table the resolution tonight and in four months, at that point, the council. Has the option to pick it up again and discuss it again or to table it again. So that option will be presented to you in four months. Yes, if you want to see this happen, no, if you don't. So Councilwoman Kestie. I know you said you're on, you haven't changed.
I know.
Okay. Councilwoman Diamond.
No, I'd like to see it sooner.
Councilman Burns.
Yes.
Councilman Lavaca.
No.
Councilman Owen.
Yes.
Councilman McGoffin.
Yes.
Councilman Allen.
Yes.
Okay. So there we have a motion that carries four to one with Councilman Allen, McGoffin, Owen. And Burns in favor of the motion and Councilwoman Kestie and Diamond and Councilman Lavaca not in favor of the motion. So that is it. That's all we had on the agenda tonight. Anything for the good of the order?
On the side of the committees. It would be cool to figure out and I know there's, I guess, getting in contact with Mark Freiberg. I am invited to some of the committees that I'm not sharing, but one I am sharing. So that's going to be Parks and Recreation and trying to get that moving forward. So I'll shoot him an email, try and see what we can do about setting that up. I know that we've got some. Good ideas moving forward with that.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Owen.
I. I respect. Their wishes, but I really and truly think this is not a. A council's. Decision. It's, it should be. It should go to legislature or he should talk to. The his senator, you know? And maybe he can. Do something for him, but I don't want to see Sidra Woolley. The council and Sidra Woolley become so political. Let's stick to Sidra Woolley business and. Running and taking care of our city. And not. Try to try to forget. Things like was brought up tonight. It kind of upsets me because I think it's way off base, so. But I respect all the council's. Wishes and decisions, but. I think we made the right decision, so. That's all I have to say and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Owen. Anyone else?
I just have a quick something.
Yes.
Past this about. You know. We got an email saying that Connie wasn't going to be. Taking it on and I just really, really want to stress how important I feel it is. That if we can look at local qualified people and if you are going to put that out there. Where could they find it? Because I have two people who might be interested, but they just don't know where to put it into. So. I I just really would like to look local first.
Um, well, we, when we put it out there, it goes out to everybody and it's listed on our website. So people local. Or in the state or out of state have opportunity to look at it. I don't know if you're aware, but the. It's at a crisis level right now trying to find financial directors. It's just really hard for cities at this point to get qualified. Finance directors in. It's not a matter of bookkeeping or accounting. It's much more complicated than that. And so we're, we're good, local people, absolutely. It'll be open to local people, but. We're also going to put it out there so that people who are in state and out of state will also have opportunity to look at it because we just don't know where this person's going to come from. And we need to fill them. We need to fill it soon. We don't want to go another. Six months or so and not have that position filled. That would not be good for the city. It would not be good for the city at all.
No, I completely understand that. I just, this last time when I had asked that. It wasn't put out there that way. So that's why I was asking for this next time.
Yeah, you know, that was just, so that really fell basically into our lap. And in fact, two, we had two of them that basically fell into our lap and that is just, there was no way that we could turn our nose up at that. We just could not do that. That would have. That would have been pretty arrogant and it also would have not been responsible to the city because our job is to put qualified people into that position. So that we can run the business. So. I can appreciate where you're coming from. Councilwoman Kestie, I really can, you know, providing jobs for people who live here, absolutely. And if there's somebody that lives here. That is qualified, wow, that would be, you know, that would be fantastic. Yeah. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. For the finance committee. There's an email we were between Brendan and myself and. We were hoping to try to get a a meeting sometime this month with Debbie still here. Is that something that that can and will happen?
I believe that is happening. It's not happening on the 17th or something like that, Brendan. I believe it is happening, Sarah. I'll I'll get that date to you. I do know that there's there was emails and discussion regarding it.
I have the new Business Development Committee meeting on my schedule. I haven't seen the finance meeting on my schedule. I just want to make sure I'm I'm there.
Yeah, I know. I know. I saw Debbie put that out there. I don't know if it was set up or not, but I thought that you. Brendan, I saw the emails between you and Debbie regarding that. So that is certainly information we'll get to you. As soon as we have it.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, do those go out as invites when they're doing the meeting? I know that when I received an invite for the auditor meeting. It never pinged on my phone or on my computer and so it didn't even show up on my calendar. And then I went in and and tried to access it and I couldn't get through. So I just want to make sure that the meeting shows up on my calendars. And and that I can access them to be able to log in and I don't have to try and circumvent it.
Yeah, that, well, I'm glad you brought that up. I I don't know that anybody else has experienced that. Maybe they have, but. Certainly when we send out invites, you know, and and you are not receiving them, that is something that you'll want to bring to our attention. I don't know if it's something. On our end or if it's something on your end or what, but we'll want to remedy that. Yeah.
And I I did send an email out about that to to Debbie and to you guys, C.C., obviously, you and Charlie on that. So.
You did see that? Yeah, yeah.
Cool.
Okay.
I do want to thank the council for you guys' wisdom with today's. Resolution and the measures that were set forth and and the wisdom to push it out a while and see what happens. I think it is an important subject, so it's. It's nice to be able to revisit it in time. I know that there can be. A lot of damage if people don't trust the governing bodies to make wise decisions when it comes to mandates or. Or any decision, finances, taxes, anything. So I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Councilman Burns, yes.
To tell everybody, since I'm going to do this later, I was having a little bit of a back and forth discussion with Detective Zach Carroll earlier. I noticed a gang tag when I was out walking my dogs. And so he sent me some good information about it, so I just wanted to pass it on to all of you. Not something I really expected to see in Sidra Woolley, so. I'm glad to hear that they are staying on top of it.
One thing, he probably shared with you, one thing that I do know is that they appreciate it when the public does make them aware of that, the tags. They do want to get on it right away so that it doesn't encourage. The growth of those groups, the recruitment of those groups, or even bringing in other groups. So thank you. Thank you. That was a good heads up. All right. So if that is it, I want to thank the council for, I thought this was a very good discussion and. The civility and the respect was immense and I think that that reflects on who you are as people. And so I'm very honored, very honored to sit on the council with you and to serve the city with you. With that, you all have a good night and I will, if I don't see you before, I'll see you on next Wednesday's council meeting.
Okay.
Night.
Good night.